Good morning. This is. We have the hammer. We call this meeting to order. It's a work session Tuesday, June 27th at 10:30 a.m. Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona 85603. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. We begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two.
Supervisor English is present.
And District three Supervisor Judd is here. I'm here. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 513-717-559-POUND. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Introductions for purposes, we don't have a lot of speakers today. It seems like it's Ms. Gilman, Sharon Gilman, Deputy County Administrator's presentation. But um, so and we don't have anybody from Sheriff or anybody like that, so we'll just introduce her. Where you now, but but as far as speakers. If if that does happen, usually in there, it's kind of natural, but in here, it's a little different. If that does happen, our administrative and staff speakers will need to introduce themselves before they speak. So I'm, we're going to talk about the possible direction and discussion regarding county animal welfare and shelters. And we've been waiting a long time to hear this neat report from Ms. Gilman. Are you gonna go to the front? Or are we just gonna listen right there?
I can do it from here if you're okay with it, if everybody can hear me okay.
If you've got everything laid out there, you just go for it.
Okay, thank you. Good morning Chairman Judd, Vice Chairman Crosby, Supervisor English. Happy to give this briefing today to update the board on where we are at the county with short-term and long-term strategic initiatives that the board has directed us to work towards regarding animal welfare and our animal care facilities. I am planning to just review our current agreements that the county has with municipalities and nonprofits, as well as discuss plans for the shelter in Bisbee that the board has approved and where we're going on that. Progress update on the county ordinance that we are reviewing, and then take any questions and have discussions. So currently, the board has has given the responsibility for animal control officers to the sheriff's office to enforce county ordinance and state laws. We have five, I believe, ACOs with that patrol the entire county. And so we do have vacancies on occasion in the sheriff's office, but there are five position control numbers for ACOs. Um, we have a Douglas IGA with the city of Douglas, a Wilcox, City of Wilcox IGA. And a service agreement with the Humane Society.
Ms. Gilman. Do we have kind of a way to check on Wilcox and Douglas and the Humane Society? I don't know if you're gonna present that. Yes, you're gonna present that.
Yes.
And I saw that bit, like, if I could just, maybe every six months or something that this comes up, kind of like we do our roads are quarterly. Because I think there are some issues currently, even before you get into that. And it would be neat if we could see it how it's, you know, like today, maybe they'll say, okay, we're gonna step up our game. But can we revisit it more than like once a year or two years? If their games are stepping up.
I. I want to address your question in the best way I can from the position I hold. As with the Douglas IGA, we have an agreement that the city will provide services to the county animal control officers for impounds, and they abide by their own city protocols and state law. So whenever a concern is, when we hear of a concern from the community regarding Douglas, we reach out to the city of Douglas for a response. Primarily, the operations are the responsibility of the city of Douglas, their city council, their mayor, their city manager. We do have stipulations within the agreement that we could break the agreement within a certain notification period. And that would be something the board would have to consider should we go that route.
All right. And then the difference between Wilcox and I don't know if you, not a county building, okay, you're gonna discuss that. All right, thanks. I've been thinking about this way too much.
It's a complicated topic with lots of parts, so feel free to ask questions as we go along. Uh, so like I said, the IGA with the city most recently was approved last year, May 24th of 2022. The cost to the county is $60,000 in FY23. There is in the agreement an increased 3% increase every fiscal year for three years of the agreement. So in FY24, it'll go up to $61,930. Um, as I mentioned, the city is responsible for the operations once of the shelter itself. The ACOs in the county maintain control over the animals that are impounded for law enforcement purposes, if they're evidence, or if the county has to put down an animal itself. It is not a county building. In conversations with the city of Douglas, I know they would like to have a new shelter. They are exploring their funding opportunities for that. This is a chart that lays out how the county has utilized the Douglas shelter once we drop off a dog or a cat. These are the numbers that I obtained from the city of Douglas records. Wilcox is, we also have an IGA which was approved in 2019. The cost is over $77,000 per year. They have not requested an increase to date. Currently, I understand the city and the county are both pleased with this agreement. It is a county building, so within that IGA, there are certain responsibilities. Should the building need major maintenance, the county would be responsible for that. Um, but the city does provide day-to-day maintenance. And they also abide by their own protocols in the state law. Uh, these are the stats for activity of the ACOs impounding animals at Douglas, or at Wilcox.
Why does it cost more in Wilcox?
It is more heavily used, if you look at the stats. Also, because they do some of the maintenance on our building, they use these funds for that day-to-day maintenance.
Oh, I did a little bit of math, and it's about $200 per animal in Douglas and 170 per animal in Wilcox. Just quickly, like.
Yeah, that's pretty close. I have 237 per animal per year in Douglas and 180.
I rounded everything. So.
Uh, back in 2021, the board approved a service agreement with the Humane Society of Southern Arizona to provide sheltering services to the county. And what this amounts to is the Humane Society transports animals from the Douglas Animal Shelter up to their facility in Tucson for adoption. This has been going on since 2021. I have some stats there below that are based on invoices that have been processed through the sheriff's office for payment. The agreement says that we cannot exceed $32,000 per fiscal year. You can see that we have not come close to reaching that. I do understand this program had some delay in getting kickstarted for various reasons. The Humane Society has been working closely with the city of Douglas to improve operations within this Douglas shelter so that the animals that they pick up meet their requirements of their shelters as far as vaccinations and the overall health of the animal.
Is there a cost for that when they just partner or go down and just exist?
No, as I understand it, the Humane Society has a has a grant through another organization that allows them to have an outreach person who visits Wilcox and Douglas to provide advice.
I hear that she may not be there. Okay.
They have a new person already, I understand.
Oh, they have a new person. Okay, I was just gonna ask that question. Okay, Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, I just wonder, what is the commitment of HSSA now and in the future? And at a concern of a constituent that wanted to know of the animals that are are that are transported by HSSA, how many of those are county dogs versus how many are city dogs?
I don't have that breakdown of what they transport for the city, because my data is just based on what they invoice to the county. It's not broken down that way, so I would have to ask HSSA for that level of detail. They are going, CEO Steve Farley has agreed to give a presentation to the board in September that will update the board fully on all of the activities that HSSA is performing in the county, all the outreach activities. He could probably give more data on that kind of thing. The rest of your question was what is the?
The commitment of HSSA now and in the future.
Again, I think that would be best addressed by HSSA, but my impression is that the Board of Directors of HSSA has directed their CEO to continue their efforts. They have many grants that allow them to do the outreach within Cochise County. And they have established a one health clinic in Douglas, which is a clinic that promotes not only human health, but animal health to the people when they come in. So it's it's that holistic kind of program that raises awareness.
Okay, and i- is there gonna be a slide in this presentation that's gonna show how many animals are from Douglas, Wilcox, Benson, and Santa Cruz County on on one slide? Or we have to kind of?
Within HSSA, that kind of thing? I don't have that data.
That's fine.
Sorry.
And it isn't it isn't included? Well, it's okay.
Okay. So the really exciting thing for the county is that we have engaged in a project to remodel the former juvenile detention center on Toverville Road into a shelter. And this is something the board approved through the USDA grant that we received, which was a congressional appropriation from Ann Kierpatrick's office that funneled down through the USDA, as well as the board appropriated additional funds, the 1.9 million to towards the project. So this is an extensive project. It will allow the county to have a partnership with the Humane Society for the operation of that facility and improve our ability to. I'm trying to think how to phrase this, approve our ability to to shelter more animals and expand our abilities beyond Douglas and Wilcox.
Yes, Mr. Crosby.
With regard to the commitment by HSSA, were they going to, did they ever commit to vaccinate, spay, and neuter animals?
That is part of the scope for this project is to have a clinic that would allow us to span neuter animals.
Okay, so as of now, that hasn't happened because there's no clinic, is that correct?
Correct. Within this project.
So I'm kind of thought today we might be starting to look at the architects and and the scope, so that's just barely beginning.
So we put out an RFSQ, which is a request for supplier qualifications that had to be posted for a number of weeks, several weeks. We started that process in February. If you'll recall, the grant was approved by the board in November. So we had to write the scope according to the grant terms, put it out for the for vendors to respond to. Then we reviewed those submissions. We have narrowed it to one particular architecture firm, and we are in discussion with them about more specifics on the project's scope. It does have to go, once we have that contract through, right now, it's at our county attorney's office for review. Once we get that back, then we have to send it to USDA for their approval. I'm told that could take a couple of weeks, and then it'll come before the board.
Was, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Was the grant from the USDA?
That grant was 1.1 million.
Okay, and what was the purpose of it?
Sure. I don't have it right in front of me, but it was for a Cochise County Animal Shelter related to the remodeling of Toverville Road facility.
Is is, okay, I'm sorry, we're gonna take turns. Is the 1.9 million matching? Is some of that matching funds?
Yes, it exceeds the match.
Okay, and the match would be 1.1 billion, I guess.
Right.
It is a equal match.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're kind of waiting to see. I am strongly advocating for somewhere in the northwestern part of the county or western part of the county. We're talking about dogs being transported from Sierra Vista to Douglas, and then people in Sierra Vista can't really get to their dogs. And Douglas is a dope in to public, so for adoption or whatever. So it's difficult. Douglas is very difficult. And yes, in two years or whenever. I'm not necessarily advocating for the Wetstone facility, but we need something somewhere. And just for information for everybody here and listening, I talked to Chief Feist this morning, and he does not feel like his board would want to take over that again. They had their building there. Now they've sold it. They're just not interested in in engaging in that, in their community.
And that's Wachukah City?
Yeah, Wachukah City. So I I just wanted to bring that up. That I I don't feel defeated by any means, but I do know that that that's a reality that we must consider. And so we've, so we do have good guidance from our community, and I want to recognize them 100%. They are really trying hard to promote something that is in that part of the county where a lot of the animals come from, and especially county animals, because we have that huge Wetstone area and J6 Mescal and and Palm marine, things that are outside of our cities. And our cities are really struggling to to handle the amount of animals that are coming in from the county in those areas. If Benson will even take them, you know, occasionally they will. Wilcox takes them on contract, and that's wonderful, but Wilcox is full. And we have, some of us in here might remember Nadine and Kathy Renee, La Schwartz. And she came to speak to the board years ago, and she brought her dog Zeke. By the way, it was wonderful. I I know Anne remembers that. Remember when Zeke came? So anyway, she, single-handedly has has begun to take in animals, and she's taken in over 100 this year on her own. And she's got her her business in her 501(c)(3), and she's she's really doing it right. But we don't recognize those kind of efforts, and maybe we need more of those efforts. So maybe the county needs to talk about it and and promote it and kind of work with partners. Until we get our Bisbee shelter and until we get something in those outward regions, and until maybe animals needing shelter slows down, we've got a lot of things to worry about, not just Bisbee Shelter. And you know that, right? But I wanted to say that publicly. So we've got, I mean, it's in, actually, I know it can't be solved fast, not even even if we were to, even though that's not really kind of on the table at this point, purchase, for instance, Watchers Facility, that's not gonna solve anything really, really fast. We need to really work towards, as fast as we can, bringing this Bisbee Shelter about and maybe keep looking for something in that other region of the county, or partner with someone else that is already doing it there. Work with Benson, work with Nadine. I don't know what we need to do, but we need to, we need to support a little bit more. And the amount of money we're giving to Douglas and and maybe maybe we're giving so much money to Douglas and Wilcox we don't have anymore to to give out, but I think we should partner with the sheriff's department and see if we can figure something out. Look at the big picture. I expected to look at the big picture today, and that's why this speech came out the way it did. So thank you. I'm gonna.
I think the project today was to look at the at the grant that we've received and the shelter that we have agreed upon in the past here in Bisbee at our facility and upgrading that. And it doesn't mean that the other information isn't important, but that's not what this meeting today is about.
Well, and that's.
So he doesn't have answers of what I'm saying. It wasn't scheduled for that. So Sheriff's Department isn't here to answer, you know.
It it, I'm just bringing it up as a future, like work session, maybe. Discussion and possible direction regarding county animal welfare and shelters could be the agenda item if we were all prepared to discuss that at a meeting. So anyway, that is our agenda today, and that's why I've gone kind of overboard. Thank you, though, Ms. English.
I understand that the topic of this agenda item is not the Watchers Facility, or also called the Wetstone Facility. And you just mentioned having a work session, and when would you propose that a work session such as that about those those named facilities would would happen?
I think that we would need to give people time, like the sheriff's department, the the county deputy administrator. I would say it could probably feasibly be done in a month.
Okay, so next month, we should expect to see an agenda item about the.
It could be the exact same thing we have on today's agenda. I think that's where we were. We were all hopeful.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm I'm trying to understand the direction this conversation is going so that I I fulfill your requests. Are you saying in a month, you want more information on what exactly?
Wetstone facility slash Watchers Facility, whatever it might be called.
Wetstone or it any other, just kind of look at what we are serving, how we are serving the animals. Basically, what it says here, animal welfare and shelters, how are we serving the animals in Cochise County? We did bring this before, it was brought before as a work.
Sure.
Prior, and we talked about a lot of things, and that's where we came up with a couple of million dollars that we wanted to put into a shelter somewhere, maybe expand with Sierra Vista.
And and I can put together some information and reach out to, say, the Benson Shelter. They have new management there, I understand, as well as Sierra Vista Animal Shelter. I know they're full quite often, so that's always been an issue. But if they want to expand, if there's ways we can partner on such an expansion, if the board is 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 interested in those kinds of expenses, I wasn't sure how much funding the board wanted to commit to the project. So I haven't looked up those things.
The sheriff's department is truly in charge of this, and they had to be in on that, those initial conversations. They would have to put some thought into it, too.
I thought we had received, excuse me for butting in, but I thought we'd received from the sheriff at one point in time an analysis of the, I'm not sure the name of it, but the the lady who does business out near Wetstone that you keep talking about, and and that that facility was not something that they wanted to to work with.
Yeah.
So I think we've already gotten that information at one point in time.
Yeah, well, it it's been rather recently that we that we have been talking about that.
Right.
And we do kind of not officially have that information, but we definitely, I definitely have that type of information. But then again, we've got like community partners. Nadine Schwartz, for instance, has moved 100 animals out of the Douglas Shelter this year. So we've got other places that we could possibly invest just a little bit and make a huge difference. So and then maybe the Benson Shelter. I'm really pushing for the Benson Shelter. It would be easier to expand that than the Sierra Vista Shelter, actually, if that were, you know, if they could manage that. Benson is doing pretty good right now, as far as as I know.
Madam Chair, do I understand there will be an agenda item which will include the Wetstone Facility, Watchers Facility in the month of July coming up?
It, we could talk about it. I'm not sure what kind of results we'll get just because of its location and who the players are.
Agenda. Yeah, the sheriff doesn't make.
I will put that under serious advisement. Thank you, because I would like to do that myself. So serious advisement. But we have people that are gonna come speak. And they they will say what they say.
So what's a part of?
We will invite the sheriff.
Looking for is for you to commit to a meeting or a work session on it, Madam Judd. You make the agenda.
It still won't be open to the public because it's a work session, but we will have the sheriff talk.
So there will be a work session in in July?
Yeah, it can include that.
Okay.
I don't mind if it includes that at all.
The answer is yes.
I'm okay with that. Yes. Hopefully, July, one month, I said. It's gonna be at least one month. So, all right, thank you for that. And we will work on that. Sharon, can I visit with you and we'll?
Yes, I I think I will need more clarification as.
Like more clarification, because I detected some equivocation where at least a month, you know, I I wasn't understood. I didn't understand what you said or what you committed to, if you committed to anything. You make the agenda. So we have a a work session about.
You can also request an agenda item as well.
You make the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, and all I'm saying, you are committed to putting.
I'm in agreement with you on a lot of things.
In July, in July, there will be a work session about including the Wetstone Facility, Watchers Facility in the month of July. Is that correct?
We have presenters, including the sheriff's department.
Not we, you.
I have presenters, including the sheriff's department, that would be invited in.
A work session in July.
What if I do, and nobody comes? So work sessions are a time for this.
I tried, I tried. What can I say?
Okay. I will do my best to have it in July, but the work session isn't you and I. The work session is a collaborative effort, so I will make an agenda, and we will have a collaborative effort. And hopefully, it works out in July. Okay, but I have emphasized many times in this meeting that it's very imminent. We must do something sooner than whenever the architect is ready and whenever it's approved by USDA. We have to really kind of look at this in a multifaceted way. And if if Watchers is an answer, we have to make sure the sheriff's department will do it. We have to make sure communities like Wachukah City will do it. We have to find a way to do it. And I don't, I'm not willing to do it myself, and I don't know if you are physically, personally yourself. So all I'm saying is, I don't mean this for this to be an argument, but I know what you want. I heard you many times. So, okay, and maybe by July, the end of July, we can have a little bit of a longer work session and even include some of the scope and architect, you know, update on that. So.
I will push for that.
Okay, I'm not asking you to commit. I'm just suggesting that could be part of it. Look at kind of what scoping looks like at that point, because I know that's something interesting to me to see kind of what the project's gonna look like in its finished form. Okay, you are on asbestos.
Yes, back to the Toverville Road Shelter. We were able to utilize funds within community development, so these are outside the grant project funds to do the asbestos abatement at the end of this fiscal year. So that's actually just completed at the end of last week. So inside the brick building, that's the former juvenile detention center, we've consultants found various forms of asbestos, asbestos, it wasn't friable yet. But if you do a kind of construction work, tearing down walls, but not, it needed to be removed prior to that kind of work. So we went ahead and did that site prep and got the asbestos removed. So basically, it's a gutted building now, minus all the drywall. Oh, I wanted to do, I did want to note one thing on the Toverville project. The proposed scope that we're working off of with the architect will allow for public outreach and public meetings on various design plans. So there will be an opportunity for the public to see different design plans and comment on them, provide feedback, whether it's sufficient, insufficient, don't like the location of this or that. We want that information to make this the best facility we can, so that will be included. And I want the members of the public to understand that this will be a process for them.
Good.
One final thing, in past work sessions, we discussed briefly, and this is past being, oh, maybe two years ago, two or three years ago, county ordinance review, we have an animal control ordinance that was passed in 2010. The county has changed in those years, the the laws have changed regarding animal welfare. So it's best that we have this reviewed by our county attorney and the sheriff's office. County administration is merely facilitating those discussions and moving it through. We also have an excellent animal welfare attorney on staff in our defense office, Sarah Dent. She has many years of experience in animal welfare law, and so she's reviewing that for us, too. She has many years of experience in animal welfare law, and so she's reviewing that for us, too. Potential changes include greater fines for cruelty and nuisance, barking dogs, that kind of thing, the time limits on barking dogs. We address various sheltering and providing food and shelter and water for your animal. One thing we are still in discussions about is whether we should license county animals. We currently do not. If we do that, we need to have a program set up to handle the administration of such a concept. So that's all entailed in this discussion. Yes.
I understood that you said, I think the sheriff is facilitating county ordinance review.
County administration is facilitating it with the Sheriff's Office. And we have the ACOs involved in the review as well because they can provide us real-life field experience on how the current ordinance sometimes ties their hands on what they can do or impedes public education, so.
If I could just mention, I have several communities where I get complaints about the same barking dogs over and over and over, every time I see the person who complained initially. So, you know, if we have an ordinance about it, I'm really excited. I hear that there's not much they can do, so you said tie the hands, and then I, I'm like, oh, that's what happened. So I am excited to get that nuisance and the barking dogs type of thing looked at. I've been able to control my dogs when they were barking. I mean, it's possible. So I don't know how, I don't know why people can't, and I'm glad they're looking into it.
And so much of animal control comes down to owner responsibility, and that's the point of the ordinance is to bring, close that loop on what the county can do for shelter services, but also where it starts with the owner.
I think this is great that they're doing that. Do you know when this will come around?
Not, been moving as fast as I would like. But it is with Sarah Dent for that review from the animal welfare law specialty side. So I really want to do it by the end of this year, calendar year. And there will be a public hearing process for that as well, where the public will be informed and can comment on the changes, particularly because this is such a diverse county of needs for animals. We help from everything, from pets to working animals on ranches, to create an ordinance that addresses the concerns of various populations is challenging.
Thank you. That was the last page.
That was the last page, and if there's questions on it for me, or I believe I have some direction regarding a future work session, so I'm I think I can move forward.
I'll meet with you about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't know that, are there any other comments? Ms. English?
The strategic plan work session on welfare. We going through that?
Wow, is that part of strategic plan? Sorry?
Are you going through the Board of Supervisors strategic planning work session regarding animal welfare?
That's what she, wait. We actually didn't address what we had in the strategic plan, but that reference was just because this had been part of our strategic.
So within the strategic plan, it was to create the intergovernmental agreements to enhance services as well as, I believe, the facilities that we're doing in Bisbee, so that's broad. That's how it relates to the strategic plan.
It was a very broad subject today.
It was a broad subject, and the strategic plan, strategic plan is rather broad, too, so.
Right. So maybe our next work session will also say strategic plan, and we will kind of address that as a strategic plan, but we'll talk about that. There will be a work session, a couple, it sounds like. Thank you, Ms. Gilman. Any other comments, reminders?
Thank you, Ms. Gilman, for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It appears that we have run out of things all of us would like to say, so I'm gonna, the next meeting will be today at 1:00 PM for a work session regarding floodplain regulations in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room. This meeting is adjourned.